John.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the second part of our meeting. This is a special city council meeting. Today is Monday, June 1st, 2020. It's approximately 4:08 PM. Before it began, I have to ask the, ask the conflict of interest statement. This is where I ask if any member of the city manager, city council, city staff has any known conflict of interest on any item on the agenda.
None.
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 Okay, see, none. So the first item is 2.1, which is Resolution 20-165. Motion.
Some of.
Motion made by Councilor Ben Colmell. Is there a second? There's no second, then it dies for a second.
I will second it for discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, second by Councilor Voskus. Okay, so with that, I turn it over to Jennifer Vega Brown. She's going to be discussing. And Jennifer, I wonder if I should kind of start off a little bit, because this was something there that I am responsible solely, not you, not clerk, no, no one. Earlier, when I was talking about my, this, this email that I got, it says on your proclamation of emergency 2020-03, "There's a typo slash word omission on one of the most important lines. This will lead to uncertainty and confusion from business owners as they try to adhere to the city's asinine limitations set ahead of the state's order. Good luck." Okay, so what he was talking about is, and I'm sure Jennifer will show you, but right here, where I circled, is missing the word outside. Now, what's interesting is I did get a couple of emails of the thousands of emails that I got. I don't know. I'm like Counselor Florida. It seemed like there were a lot. I don't know if it's 4,000, but it seemed like a lot. But one of, I had a couple of them to, you know, clarify some, some questions on what the wording was. I just figured they didn't, they missed it. Well, it turns out that the word that was missing was outside. So it should have said on number six, maximum occupancy 25% inside, 50% outside for 30 days, then 50% slash 75% respectively. I looked back at what I emailed, and I did leave that word out accidentally. So I want to read to you an e, a text that I had this morning that someone asked me about the situation. It says, "Turns out that my plan actually allowed more customers than the governor's plan. I'm not allowed to be more lenient, only more restrictive. I had put 25% inside and 55, and 50% outside, or at least that's what I had meant. I did not mean to leave off the word outside. The governor's office did con, did confirm that 50% was total inside and outside. I know that I'm allowed to do less. My intent was not to hurt restaurants, but to reduce indoor and expand outdoor. I will just go with the governor's plan and leave it at 50%." And this person writes back, and this, she's not a restaurant owner. She's a real estate investor. She says, "Unfortunately, you were misunderstood." She puts sorry with a little, I wouldn't say, I can't really see what kind of face it is. So that is, is where I have to apologize. I left off outside. So anyways, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. David Dahlhan was going to share the, putting David on the spot now.
Oh, okay.
Or, I'm sorry, do my assist. Sorry, David Dahlhan. Sorry. This is Jennifer Vega Brown. I'll just go through the PowerPoint presentation with you. And then if you have any questions, go free to ask. Next slide, please. This is, this was in response to the first governor's emergency proclamation that went, that went into existence that began in March, March 11th. There was another emergency powers, March 27. And then on March 29th, the mayor issued an emergency proclamation regarding additional requirements for restaurants, movie theaters, gyms, hair salons, and nail salons. Next slide, please. First, we went to the mayor's emergency proclamation ordinance, which is section 9-38. The proposed resolution extends the emergency proclamation. As you, as we just discussed previously, it's only good for three days, and then you have the ability to extend it. This extension will run concurrent with the governor's executive order. And an automatic, it will be automatically extended until the public health order is rescinded, or it can also be rescinded previous by movement of the city council. And these are your council options.
So, so Jennifer, if by me having the outside on there, that would have, that would not have been proper and not eligible to do. Is that correct?
Correct. You can't, exactly what you said previously, you can have more restriction than the governor, but not less.
Right. So let me just kind of also share with council. So when the governor had issued her, that she was going to be opening up restaurants, it said, "Restaurants may operate indoor dining service 50% of max, maximum occupancy, according to the COVID safe practices." If you recall, about five days prior, she had opened up about 50% outdoor dining. That was very the first one. Okay, so I took it that that was still eligible or available. And then it says, "Bar and counter seating is prohibited, no standing service, six feet of distance between tables, discontinued service stations require customers to congregate, stringent and regular sanitizing training for employees on cleaning process." Okay, so that's what led me to add, because I was concerned, you know, I was thinking, you know, can we have a few more guidelines before June 1st or for June 1st? And so that's when I came up, I call, contacted a few people to, restaurant people to get, kind of get some ideas. I really liked the disposable menus. I understand there's a lot of restaurants that are already doing that. The self-serve stations, you know, a lot of times you see people, they go over there and they, they get their ketchup, their mustard, and you know, unless you're constantly cleaning that, you know, people or if you were wearing a glove, I mean, that'd be great, but you know, that's where it said no self-serve. And tables be sanitized. I did put eight feet apart. And that employees' staff must have face coverings. And then that's, that's where we got to the maximum occupancy. So that's kind of where I'm at. You know, I, I think about, you might be thinking, well, why do you want a face covering there? Well, you know, when, when we get food from the, that's checked by the USDA, I mean, that's, that's the government agency. A lot of times the state is supposed to inspect, state restaurants are supposed to inspect those for cleanliness and such. And I just felt that I needed to do something quickly, knowing that it was going to expire today. And that gives us a chance to figure out what exactly, if anything, we're going to do. That's something there that we're, I, I, I don't want to go back and do 25% only, because then I don't want to hurt the restaurants. That was not my intent. My intent was to actually somehow encourage more outdoor dining as opposed to indoor. But if all my choices is 50% total, then I would rather just leave it alone. Still implement some of these other items, but on that particular item, leave that out. So with that, I'll turn it over for comments. Councilor Voskus.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess before asking questions or giving more comments, just to be clear, today's emergency proclamation ordinance, or today's emergency proclamation which expires, unless we renew it, cannot be renewed because of the wording that excludes the word outside. So that is the renewal of the proclamation essentially null and void?
I think just on that portion, isn't that right, Jennifer? On that one sentence, we're supposed to have outside. The rest could be renewed, or?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is Jennifer Vega Brown. You, you can just change that word so that it is consistent with the governor's executive order.
Okay, so it can be amended.
And it, it's a minor change, and it would be, like we said previously, it's state law anyway, so we would just make it consistent.
Okay.
In the resolution.
Or you leave it out, I mean, right? Would you just leave it out if you're going to go with the state order at 50%?
Yes, you'll have to add, the way that this resolution is worded, you'll have to add language that, that indicates that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, I, I guess as of right now, I don't have too many questions, but do you just want to share some thoughts on the whole process and kind of where, where I landed on this today, after a couple of days of thinking a lot and talking to a lot of people about this? I, I think I shared maybe some of the frustration that Counselor Florida expressed earlier. Reading, reading about this in the Sun News, I think Friday evening or Saturday morning, because we had never discussed it before. In fact, we hadn't even come close to discussing everything that was included here. And I get that that's the nature of the emergency proclamations in the sense that, Mayor, you can do what you feel is right for our community to protect the safe, safety and well-being of residents. I just, I guess when we passed that original ordinance, I didn't expect it to be used in this particular manner. I figured we'd discuss it, you'd declare it, and then, you know, we would choose to extend it. So would have just loved to have those conversations in an open setting about what your thoughts were on the restaurants reopening prior to the, to the proclamation coming forward, whether that was during council comments, you know, on Monday or some other time that's appropriate for us to discuss them openly. Would have really appreciated that, that chance to talk about it. I think if we weren't surrounded by communities that have drastically different rules, I would probably support this. But I think because Mesia is open and will adhere to the state rules, and because El Paso is open and has been open, and Las Cruces are traveling to a community with higher rates of COVID, potentially putting our residents, I believe, more at danger than if they were here locally. Then I would, like I said, I probably would support this, but I think realistically, from what I've experienced and what I've seen, the behavior of people, consumers who are going to restaurants and retail outlets, they're going to go to work, so, and they're going to come back to our communities. And so rather than, rather than lose out on two fronts, and trust me, economic, right now, gee, right now, people's lives are much more important to me than, than, you know, than GRT to the city. However, when it comes to both of those two combined, right, if, are we really protecting folks if they're just going somewhere else, and at the same time, we're losing GRT? It just seems to me like a double whammy in terms of, you know, me thinking that this particular solution is not, is not the right one. So I don't, I don't support it at this point. I think some of the regulations or some of the other items included in this proclamation would love to have actual experts kind of be able to give me and others some real guidance.
Or data.
I've heard a lot of the complaints about the, about the gyms, and I'm not going to a gym anytime soon personally. I have, I've gone to the gym every morning for like five or six years, like, I mean, even on Sundays. But I'm not going back anytime because I, that's my choice, that's a choice I, I want to make. But I know there's a lot of folks in the fitness industry or who enjoy the fitness facilities that are asking about the free weights and why they can't use the free weights, and I can't, I can't give them an, an answer that I think is qualified in terms of my knowledge of, you know, just how, how much that potentially increases the spread of, of COVID and why we would restrict that. So I would just, you know, I would love to hear from a professional who can say, hey, definitively, free weights increase, you know, X and Y by this percent, and here's why. So it's a little bit hard for me to make that call personally. And so at the same time, I think that if we do see an increase in cases and with increased testing capability that we have, and I hope rapid response testing now at the local lab, I am prepared to act quickly to scale back any type of restrictions that, that we need to. Obviously, don't want it to come to that because that means that we would have made the wrong decision, but I'm happy to own that if this is the wrong decision. I, I also think about the mental health of people who are working so many of these jobs in the service industry and other places that, that really need a purpose right now. I know a lot of folks who may have received benefits that don't necessarily want to be receiving assistance. They, they would, they would rather be working. I, I've said this before, but I feel so privileged that I get to keep my job during this time, that I get to have a steady paycheck, and I don't have to worry about where my next meal is coming from, because I, I just happen to have a gainful employment, and I'm lucky and I'm privileged and I'm blessed to do that. And if I didn't, I'd be one of those people itching to get back to work, because I need purpose, right? I need to wake up and do something and move, you know, move around, use my hands, use my brain. That's kind of what helps me keep, keep myself sane. And so I imagine that there's other folks out there who are wanting to go back to work. And, and so I think about them more than, more than I think about the employers. I think about workers who, who really just need to to, to work, to find purpose, and, and even for mental health issues. I know some folks, some folks need to get out of their house and, and find an opportunity to do something, again, that they feel is constructive. And so you know, I, I just guess I'm not prepared to make a decision to support this now unless I have more information. And so for that reason, I don't, I don't think I'll support it. Unless we have new data or new information that comes to me, but just wanted to make those comments. So thank you, Mayor.
No, thanks, Counselor. And, and again, and kind of what Counselor Florida was getting at. I, I, I was, when I first got word that the restaurants were going to open, it was just within, within a few days. I can't reach out to you all. I can't contact you and say, hey, let's come up with some ideas. I would, I would love to have. But when I saw what was being addressed, and I, I felt like if they could, if we could increase the outdoor, still have the indoor at 25%, increase outdoor, say 50, they actually would have more, in my opinion, more customers, but you know, granted, that's not even allowed. So it wasn't, I wasn't trying to pull, you know, do this really quick. It was, but again, knowing that it would expire today, and this would lead to the discussion that it is, I think it's a, a good thing. But I just want you to know that. As that, when I told you when you first allowed me to have this opportunity, that I would discuss it. And granted, if, if, if it was a, if it was hardened, set rule that restaurants were going to open up on June 1st, and this was told, given to us two weeks ago, yeah, great. You know, and I'm not, I, I can't blame the administration. They don't know that it's based on, on how our spike was, or how our, our cases were decreasing. And I know they were anxious to get things going. So I just wanted to point that out. That's all. So I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Sword.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, let me start by saying, I don't think I can support this because I don't believe we need more restrictions than what the state has. What Counselor Voskus said about El Paso is very, very telling. We can't stop people at the border of Tex, with Texas. And so that's going to be a problem, as he said. I'm, I'll add to it, in the mental health area that that's a concern of mine. I know people, they like their jobs, they like to go work. Not all of them, but most of them do. And they like to, to work with people, and they miss the, the people that they work with. And so just for the mental health part of it, it's a problem. So then I tried to think of, well, what justification can we add for more, more restrictions? And I just don't see it. It was mentioned at one time that we don't test enough people. Well, we're testing more people than 45 other states. There's only four states that test more than we do. And so we can have, we have a pretty good handle on what's happening with the people in the state and Donaana County, too. The fact of the matter is, Donaana County has a lower percentage of population that tests positive than all but one or two other places in the state. We test at 122 per 100,000 people, whereas the state has 282,000 people that test positive per 100,000 people. And even Albuquerque and Burton County, they are at 195 per 100,000 people. So as far as our, our rate that we have here of 19, it's lower than the rest of the state and except for the Northwest. And if you watch the numbers, our positive test rates are going down. And the last week, we have been dropping significantly. We kind of follow the state a little bit in that way. So we've cut, left our peak, one peak anyway, behind and with hand, lower numbers. And I look at it this way, almost everybody in this city knows what we can do to lower our possibility of getting infected. We have all these procedures and, and, and that we are able to do, and we know work. The face masks are distancing, physical distancing. Wash your hands, don't shake hands, and so on, all the other things. People know what to do to prevent getting from the disease. We have lots of, we have received lots of information and advice. Some of it's good, some not so good. People are so emotional about this. And there again, I'll say it again, we suffer some mental health problems because of this. And I, I think of it this way, nobody knows for sure what the whole thing is about. That everything that's been done has been done with the best possible information. And we don't have all the answers yet. So we don't know for sure what we're doing is right. I'll give you that. But here's what I, I think. Let's go with the, what the, the governor, the state of New Mexico is going with. And should we find in a week, two weeks, a month that it's wrong, we can shut down again. It's not impossible to shut down again if it gets out of control. So that's why I can't support this resolution. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I don't know if I would go and shut them down again, but I think it's a good, I think that's very prudent to see what it's like in a couple of weeks or so. I appreciate your comments. Counselor Bates, do you?
Thank you, Mayor. In preparation, I have actually written a statement down.
Okay.
Thank you. Today, we have the opportunity to take a cautious but brave step to living in a COVID-positive world. From the beginning of this pandemic, I have viewed this issue on a three-part lens. The physical, mental, and economic health of our community is at the forefront of every decision that I've made. I started working in the restaurant industry when I was just 15 years old. And so I know a lot about the trials that they can face. And I'm so thankful, and I applaud the many restaurants and all of our businesses in this community that have brought safety and service as priorities during this time. But now is the time to make these first steps to reopening so that we can adjust to new challenges and bring forth recommendations of our new Economic Recovery Council to look at any of those unforeseen issues. These industry experts will be able to lift up what areas we can still improve upon when looking at safety in our community. And adjustments will have to be made. And if timed correctly, we can make these needed adjustments before we have to think of adding even new elements in with the potential of schools starting in the fall in a modified fashion, or with the resurgence of winter respiratory illnesses. And I know that there is a great fatigue that we feel from the last few months. These life-altering events weigh heavy, and many are ready to go out and to return to normal. But the fact is that there is not a return to the normal that it once was. This virus is now with us for the foreseeable future, and we must think long-term when making decisions. We must continue to balance the three aspects of safety while holding to the principle that it is a human's life that has that greatest value. So slow and measured steps are needed for reopening. We must be ready to adapt to new scientific findings and use all resources available to keep our community safe. History has shown that it is often the second wave of a pandemic that brings about the greater possibility of consequences. And it's our behavior as a community, once we start lifting restrictions, that will guide we, where we are at in a month. If people return without adhering to those state guidelines set forth, there is a great possibility that our community will not be able to keep that balance of health. And so please care for our local economy and purchase goods and services from our small businesses here. And please respect the new regulations that are designed to protect employees and customers. And I know it's hard, and it feels like you shouldn't have to say this, but I do think we need to remember to care for one another. It's hard to, I'm sure I have had the lens on that maybe look at in overly cautious way, given my circumstances, but it is a balance, and that's what I've been elected to do. So I do feel that this is the first step that we need to adhere to the state guidelines and not put any further restrictions. But I look forward to our Economic Recovery Council being up and running and giving those industry insights that can help tweak any sort of issues that we see if we do find that we are having gaps in safety. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Gondara.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues who have spoken before, very insightful and thoughtful messages. You know, Mayor, I was prepared to vote no today as well, and I have felt like I was looking also from a lens of safety and well-being of our, of our entire constituency. I plus having the experience, working in the behavioral health sector, and having a daughter who is doing, who is serving her residency in Colorado, and early on, when this pandemic happened, right off the bat, several, a couple of her colleagues tested positive in the department that she was in. And so then that put an extra layer of concern and fear as a mom, right, as a parent, things that you want to do to protect. And so then that put an extra layer of concern and fear as a mom, right, as a parent, things that you want to do to protect your children, um, even your adult children. Um, and and so I'm I'm hearing from her from the perspective of a doctor seeing that happen and immediately what the healthcare industry there or the hospital did to protect um, people, they they said social distancing immediately, right? You have to wear your mask, wear your mask all the time. And unfortunately, there was some hoarding of of the N-ninety-fives, so much so that she didn't have she didn't have what she needed. So there I go looking and online to ensure that she had what she needed in the specific N-ninety-five that worked for for her. And so um, she spent one week at work and one week working from home. And and did that for probably an entire about a month and a half. And it was probably one of the hardest things that I had to do being um, from a distance, calling her, making sure that she was okay. Um, and actually making sure both my kids were okay, that they were handling things like um, they they need the way they needed to and and get making sure they had everything that they needed. So I, you know, I come from a very caring and empathetic um, position. I I think I've often said that I was very proud of the city's response. And I continue, I continue to be. And as I I read the, you know, the emergency proclamation and the additional requirements, some of the things that was really concerning to me and I guess, I don't know who you spoke to, be it businesses, constituents, a- any of those people, but I was getting calls from chambers saying, what's happening? Why did this happen? And being as collaborative and as coordinated as I feel that I try to be to encourage the communication and it feel that that it happened, that that not only if we felt blindsided, the business community preparing for a month to be open June first was certainly blindsided and then with additional additional requirements. And so I I I'm concerned about some of these additional requirements and the extension of like for thirty days, a lot of us need to understand that um, unemployment checks are stopping, the PPE, all those things that businesses and employees and for and for that matter, not all employees had the luxury of applying and going through that whole system as difficult as it was to include the businesses. And I say luxury and I don't, I don't mean that. Because there's folks out there that can't even can't apply for that because they're undocumented. There are immigrants, which are most of our, a lot of our folks who are working in the in the in the service industry. You know, uh, are are mixed status families. So I I to to impart this kind of restriction and not be prepared as a city to have the conversations that I feel are necessary to to uphold something like this is what that was a hard, for me, it was hard. It was hard to to um, hard to do this. As you know, people were preparing um, with the the governor's mandates and all this is additional. I heard from small businesses that the eight feet requirement was too much, that would eliminate a lot of people, businesses that I frequent often who care about their their employees and their patrons. And and then I have a cousin who has her own, um, she's a hairdresser. She has her own salon who's, she's alone in that, in that um, alone in that um, op, um, building, if you will, or that that space. She doesn't have others that work for her or work in there. And so I know that she wasn't aware that I just, I just feel like the timing and the things that happened were not enough to ensure that people have plexiglass and and the various things are and and all these things, checking their, checking people's temperatures. We were hearing from childcare centers that they can't even get temperatures, uh, thermometers for them. So like, I I think in a perfect world, this might work and um, I was here, I came here today uh, with an open mind to hear what um, the numbers suggest to us today. I got a update that we we had six, six positive COVID cases today. And but I don't believe that the numbers and our rate it it is such that we need to have additional requirements for um, the, for these places. So I'm also with Counselor um, Vazquez. I'd like to hear some of the reasoning behind sort of the gyms and why exercise machines and free weights. Those of us who've been in the gyms for many, many years, I don't do that anymore, but I I um, I know that it was definite requirement that you wipe down everything that you used to include free weights. And 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 their sanitizing stations and and you know, those kinds of things. Finally, I just want to add that for the first time this weekend, I went um, to Target and Home Depot because I had to. And frankly, not everybody is wearing face masks and adhering to the the social distancing, the six feet. And honestly, for all of this to work and for, I would hate, I think if we limited or shut, I I use the word shut down loosely, but if we said, okay, we're at fifty percent and now we have to do twenty-five, we have to move into decreasing to twenty-five percent, that is going to hurt the industry even more. So I I think that we all as as citizens have to be responsible for each other. I mean, I wear that mask to protect others. And I I again, I'm I'm receiving emails about the masks and this for me is something that is necessary for us to move into the next phases. And and with that, Mayor, I'll I'll um, I'll end for now.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protim, uh, Counselor Flotis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I spoke to the um, to the fallout that uh, the fallout after the uh, the proclamation was sent out to the press and I received and saw it on the front page of the news. But as to the substance, I have to say, I think we're all, I think we're all feeling a heightened uh, level of anxiety. And um, and 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 my kids are, my 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 sons are adults, are full-blown adults. And so I live in a morbid fear. In fact, I hadn't taken my dog out for a walk until Saturday. And that's when I saw the front page of the my neighbor's newspaper. So I'm, I'm afraid of dying because of COVID nineteen. I I just, I just am. So I take every precaution I can possibly take. And I shared this with you, Mayor, and uh, I don't know what the context was, that I think I might have had a form of COVID because I kept relapsing over a period of three months. And that started in January and I remember when I drove up to Santa Fe uh, with uh, Counselor Sword, I was just coming out of that and then boom, right after that, I relapsed again and then again in February and then March. So then with this whole thing of COVID came out, I thought, oh, my gosh. So it isn't that, I don't think the precautions are enough. I mean, I mean, I personally, you know, I personally, my behavior is totally different and so I'm just very whatever, very, very extremely cautious and I go out only when I have to. But I I can't, I can't go with this because I I find it in spite of the the typo there. Even without the typo, it just seems redundant. It seems yeah, I I don't know what it it's going to accomplish, quite frankly. It's a, it's no different than what the governor already has. And um, and I don't know, I I think that behavior is the best thing. I think that people really believe based on all those emails um, and conversations that I had over the weekend. I think people really feel that they can make up their, they can, they can make the decision to go out and be surrounded by fifty, you know, fifty percent, whatever capacity. You know, whatever customers. I think that it is our duty to do the best we can when it comes to uh, health and welfare of our constituents. That's what we get elected to do. But frankly, um, I know that in my precinct or excuse me, my district, there were, I think, far less people, well, any election, far less people who went out to vote than than sent those emails. And I mean, usually we just get a fraction of a percent who show up to vote, right? But but we had a lot of people come out and then talk about masks and and the proclamation and everything like that. But um, no, I I'm not in agreement with this uh, substantively. And uh, and thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Flotis. Yes, whoever set this up obviously knows what they're doing. We should make them a Director of Community Engagement because yeah, that uh, there was a, I'm impressed, uh, really am. Usually, like you say, I mean, I'll get, you know, I get five hundred emails a day, but not like this. This is, this was impressive. Uh, you know, pretty good, pretty good. Okay, last uh, speaker or Counselor Ben Colmo.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's not that hard to set up a petition. I'll teach you how to do it.
That's okay. Uh, we're good. This is a, this is a once in a, I, I I bet you I, the last time I got this many emails was, what was it? SB ten seventy or something, Arizona. It was years ago. I've, I forgot. But it was, this was reminiscent of it, so.
Um, thank you. I am, you know, I'm going to say something super difficult because I think um, I've never disagreed with all of my colleagues. I received, I'm I'm deeply concerned about this reopening. I received a memo uh, that was created with the help of Dr. Skrize, Secretary Skrize, who who's had a watchful eye on Doñana County for quite a while. What, I'm going to read to you what it says right here. The growth rate in cases in the southwest region, which predominantly includes Doñana County, is two point five to three times higher than the state as a whole. So we currently have the largest growth rate at one point two four comparison to the the rest of the regions. You know, I think people are like, well, if we isolate these, put these, we can't, we can't isolate them. I mean, you know, Counselor Vazquez said the very, we are so intertwined in this region, like we cannot isolate different numbers to help us feel better about the reopening. And so I am, I am deeply concerned. I, you know, I I think it's going to be a lot harder to scale back restrictions as opposed to taking it easy and slowly. Some of these restrictions, additional ones, are things that other states have done. But I get it, you know, I get it. I get it that people are frustrated. I do have to say that I'm really appreciative of the folks that reached out um, and expressed their deep concern for the community um, and their fellow neighbor. And I spoke to a lot of people that did not agree with me, uh, don't agree with me, that don't agree with me, excuse me. But we could agree that I I, and a lot of folks I talked to, we could agree that we have to take care of each other because each other is sort of all we got, right? So I really want to thank those folks that that had those courageous conversations with me. You know, I do have to note that I think a lot of people think that I don't hear them, that I'm not listening to them because I disagree. But it's just not true, right? My parents are business owners. My parents didn't qualify for PPP and the other loan that was available. I, it was so complicated, I couldn't help them apply for it, right? So I intimately get it. Also though, my parents take care of my elderly grandparents who have diabetes and my mom helps take care of her sister who is lupus, right? So those things have taken priority for my family and and I take that very seriously. I think for me, what's even most frustrating though, as a decision maker has been what I have seen and heard from a lot of other folks, influential leaders in our community, business leaders in our community, people who are trusted, use terms like this is a fight against the city council. I find that irresponsible. I think it's irresponsible to exploit working people's frustrations and anxieties and because of the uncertainty of the moment. I get you're angry. I absolutely do. This is a terrible situation, but that's just irresponsible. This isn't about, there is no us versus them here, right? There isn't us versus them. There is us versus a pandemic. There is us versus a virus. A virus that I might add is predominantly killing indigenous, black, brown, elderly and poor folks. We cannot simply decide that the virus is no longer a threat. I just, I don't think that's how it works. And my concern is that a lot of the folks demanding a reopening fifty, a hundred percent are the same folks refusing to wear a mask in public to protect themselves and to protect their fellow neighbor. And that may be a huge generalization, but I honestly don't think it is. Some of the same folks who have made comments that this is, virus is a hoax. So that those things concern me. I spoke to a pastor this morning who happened to also say, you know, yes, fifty percent, but right, he, him and I disagreed, but we had an incredible conversation. And he told me, you know, what he also did say that I thought was really powerful and I read it down, he said, people's freedoms come with responsibility, right? So a lot of folks are talking about their freedoms and all that. He said, people need to be responsible with their freedoms. Right? So it was very much a meeting in the middle, right? Like, yes, let's open up for these businesses that are hurting, that they just need to get there. But then there was this deep understanding that there needs to be a balance. And I, I really respect that. So there's no easy, there are no easy choices. They, there haven't been since March, you know, and I'm I'm five months in, like, this is not how I expected to learn how to be a city counselor. This is hard. This has been incredibly hard since March. But I want to get to the other side of this pandemic, not regretting having done more. I don't want to get to the other side of this with families who were COVID victims demanding that we didn't do more for their families, right? But I think about that. I think about that. I don't want to get to the end of this regretting not having done more because lives are not something that can be recovered at the end of the day. We will fight like hell for the economy to recover. I have no doubt. For working families, I have no doubt we will fight for that. But I think moving forward, I really want to, and this is the thing with masks, right? Like, it's really about pushing people to be responsible, to cooperate, to be mindful of one another. That's how we're going to get to the other side of this faster. So I'll get up my soapbox here in a second, but given that um, we're moving forward with the state, you know, with the rest of the state, um, I wrote out a couple of things that I think it's like, you know, hoping for the best, preparing for the worst a little bit. You know, I really want, I want personally weekly updates on testing and testing availability. Honestly, I think we need increased testing in Doñana County as a whole. I think we need a strong contract, contact tracing program countywide. You know, I think, you know, they started hiring folks. I don't know what that's like for Doñana specifically, but I think we need to ensure that we have a strong program here locally. I think we have to ensure that employers are noted, immediately notifying the rest of their staff if one of their coworkers tests positive. I think we need to do scenario planning and I think I'm excited that we voted in those folks today on the Economy Recovery Council because I hope that one of the first things we do is scenario planning where we're thinking, okay, what if there is a resurgence and it's terrible and one month in? What if this is the reality? What if this is the reality for six months, right? Like we need to, I'm doing that for my own organization, right? I think it's important that we do this as a city. Frankly, there is no national plan. I think the federal government has seriously failed us. So we, we need to do that here. And then, you know, we need to ensure that the other part of the workforce that isn't coming back to work yet, that their needs are being met. So I want to, you know, go back to CAA, I want to go back to the Community Foundation, Catholic Charities, all the organizations to ensure that those folks that are not yet back to work are still having access to resources, to cash in their pockets, to be able to pay their rent. And you know, the last thing I'll say is the governor said it pretty well. Just because we're reopening doesn't mean you have to go, right? So if you're feeling uncomfortable, if you're feeling like that particular business isn't taking it seriously, don't go, right? Encourage your friends not to. So I'll stop there. I also want to note that in the petition, they name that all, everything is open fifty percent, but that's not true, right? The governor's order says, including that group fitness classes are not permitted while indoor malls, hair and nail salons, barber shops, tattoo parlors and massage services may begin operating at twenty five percent. So that is in the mayor, in the governor's order. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. You know, I, I want to highlight just a couple of things here. One thing that you said, Counselor Bencomo, you said family members who have underlying conditions. And Counselor Sorg said almost everybody knows what to do. And I guess I was thinking this weekend and, you know, I, I, not, not a day goes by, I don't read a report on COVID nineteen, like Counselor Flotus, it scares me to death. I, I, I try to watch as many documentaries as I can on this. And I mean, I'm, you know, us as a body are fairly informed. But I don't know if everybody really knows what to do. And so I was going to ask Jennifer a question. If we were to come up with, even if it's just some best practices that could be distributed to local businesses, one, if we could do that. I don't know. Is that something we could do, Jennifer? That, you know, I guess what I'm trying to get at is what, what really concerns me is, yes, I think a lot of people who do go out, they feel comfortable. They, they know that they're in pretty good shape and then, and if they did get it, they'll survive and they're willing to take that risk. But what if they unknowingly take it to a family member that, that maybe they went to visit and, and then someone caught it and they, they contracted it and it was a serious illness for them? I know they would feel really bad. And what I'm trying to say is maybe they didn't know, that they didn't know that they could be a carrier. And so that's why I was hoping that we could maybe distribute information. You know, if, if a business wants to have it, great. If they don't, okay, then, then don't. But I guess it's important to really make sure, do everything we can. You know, granted, like I said, I'm not going to be pushing this. I'm not going to be moving this forward. But I, I, I feel like we need to do everything within our power to, in, in the, in the weeks that you and, that all of us have learned about this, you know, because we deal with it daily. Daily we deal with it. We're pretty versed on it, but we're still not an expert. And, and, but if we could take these best practices and have a flyer distributed to various businesses, one, can we do that? Is my question. Is that something we could do?
Mayor and Council, this is Jennifer Vega Brown. Yes, you can absolutely send out any information you want to businesses. It's a health issue. It's a public safety issue. You can, you can do that.
And I'm thinking if, if businesses would be willing to at least give them to their customers as they come in or go. If they don't, fine. You know, we're, we're just trying to help. You know, it's funny, the, if there's one thing that really was really funny, this is one guy, I forgot who he was. He's really upset. He was going to show me tomorrow at the ballot box, he's not voting for me. That's how informed he is, okay? I thought, okay, well, I'm sorry, you know, I'm sorry I lost your vote. Now, and he was going to say, I'm not voting for you tomorrow. So what I'm trying to get at is they don't, not everybody really knows. And if we could help educate them more and more, that would be better. That's all I'm trying to get at. If we could save a few lives that way, if we could come up with this flyer and be able to either distribute it or allow them to copy it or us make those copy, I, I have no idea. But if that, if, if, if that could be given away so that they could read about it and realize, wow, I didn't know I could be a carrier. That was the reason, that was one of the big reasons why the schoolchildren, they didn't want to go to school. It wasn't, you know, at that time, in the very beginning, it was noted that they weren't, seemed to be catching any illness, but they were afraid for their grandparents if they took it, took it home. You know, visited their grandparents over the weekend and they could be a carrier. So that's all, that was the whole purpose, in my opinion, for me. It was just trying to make sure that we did our best or that I did my best. And make sure that everybody was safe, not to harm anybody. So. Okay, well, uh, oh, Mayor Potem, you have a question, comment?
I do, Mayor. I appreciate the, the thought. I, I just know that we have systems in place, like the chambers that are willing to come to the table, that have been meeting Nash, with Nash, their national chambers and different things. That, that line of communication needs to be opened up. I agree with Counselor Bencomo about receiving data on a weekly basis about the tasks and the rapid testing, the labs, ensuring that people are getting, getting the results back timely. Those kinds, those kinds of things. And again, at the thought about meeting jointly with our county constituents, our county delegation is really important. And I agree that we can't separate ourselves out. I know that people are deeply concerned about Dojana County. So are we, we all are. I am. I mean, and, and I'm encouraging you to have those conversations. We need to, we need to have like the, the robust and courageous conversation that Counselor Bencomo had with the pastor. Yeah, I have him with the business community. In fact, I'm going to have a Zoom meeting tomorrow. I'm, I'm a little concerned about how that all is going to roll out, but I'm, I'm here. I'm open. I'm available to talk. My point is, is that people were blindsided and I don't want that to happen. Everybody, they're not even prepared for any of this. It just doesn't make sense to me to continue that way. And again, and I keep saying this, those Friday special meetings are really important. As we move forward, we're going to have to, hey, I don't like to have an additional, we're like meeting and meeting and meeting. But it's important so that we're sort of on the same page and we're hearing the same things often. All I have to say. And, and we got a, all of us got a, a letter from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Debbie Moore says there's best practices that they've recommended that are in addition to the state and feels that the recovery board, it would be a great first step for the recovery board to, to hear and, and put forth specifically the Dojana County. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. All right. Well, I think that pretty much concludes our comments. And so let's go ahead and call for the vote. Just to clarify, no vote will not extend. Yes vote does. It's been moved in second. And so with that, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution twenty dash one six five. Counselor Beta Stewie?
No.
Counselor Vasquez? Counselor Bencomo?
No.
Counselor Sorg?
No.
Counselor Flotus?
No.
Counselor Gomera?
No.
Mayor?
No. Okay. Well, that takes care of that. So thank you very much for your comments and all that you guys do. So I think that's pretty much it. So we'll go ahead and ask for motion second to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Sorg, second by Counselor Flotus. So we adjourn all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those were adjourned. It's five oh seven PM. All right. Thank you.